We have had requests from one of you, I won't say who, but one of you has asked that instead of having longer opening and closing statements and shorter answers to the issues, that we change it up and make the opening and closing statements brief to allow more time for you to address the issues at hand. If there are no objections, I would like to make that change from what we had previously arranged.
How brief?
Sixty to ninety seconds for opening and closing statements. Two to three minutes for question and answers. Is that okay?
Did you say sixty seconds?
A minute, a minute and a half. Any objections?
No objections.
Awesome. All right.
I just want to ask, you set up a program, you set us information articulated in how the program was going to be done. Am I correct?
Yes.
Then I suggest we follow what you suggested. One person don't change the whole formula. You gave us information of what to expect. Now we have to make all these adjustments. So one person makes a suggestion? I don't think that's right. So I'm prepared to follow what you sent out to the entire county candidates.
What do you think?
I'm curious what the folks here would refer to.
All right. Hands. Longer opening and closing statements, shorter answers.
Can you describe the two options for us and let us raise our hands for either one? And I'm just trying to get a sense of what the differences are.
So opening statements would be two to three minutes, closing statements two to three minutes, question and answers would be a minute to a minute and a half. Otherwise, we flip that. Opening and closing statements would be a minute to a minute and a half. Question and answers would be two to three minutes. Okay, so longer opening and closing statements. Longer question and answers. Okay. All right, so we'll have a minute to a minute and a half for each person's opening statement. The seating arrangements have been randomized as always, and we'll start here with Mr. Meyer. You proceed this way for opening statements, closing statements, and both in reverse direction. Mr. Meyer?
Thank you very much, and, uh, thank you very much. Thank you very much for taking the opportunity to speak with you all today. I appreciate the format of this as well, and look forward to getting into the questions. So I'll keep it brief. I've been very honored to have been on Richmond City Council for the past four years, and we've got a lot of challenges to deal with going forward. As I run for another term, I am endorsed by the California Democratic Party, as well as the Contra Costa Democratic Party, the East Bay Times, the East Bay Express, the Sierra Club, as well as the Leaky Conservation Voters, and a whole range of other groups and elected officials, including our Congressman Mark Sonier, Assembly Member Tony Thurman, our Supervisor John Joy, and so many more. So I look forward to having this conversation, and I'm really eager into getting into the back and forth on the issues today. And I look forward to having a great conversation with all of you, and hope that you will consider me on the open break.
Hi, good evening, everybody. I'm Melvin Willis. I've actually been in this area my entire life. Actually, when I was a kid, thirteen years old, they used that program here called Late Night Friday, so I'm actually pretty familiar with the community center. I've been having childhood nostalgia since I got here. But for the past five years, I've been a community organizer, which is going out into the community door to door, figuring out what people's issues and concerns are, and how we come together to fight for solutions. Through that work, we've been able to prevent foreclosure, pass healthcare programs within the counties so people can get access regardless of immigration status, even reach out and make sure people knew how they could qualify for Obamacare, the Affordable Care Act when it was passed, and now we're involved in getting measure out on the ballot. So I'm running for Richmond City Council because I've always seen a community voice and communities that wanted to feel like they were being represented and heard, and I just kind of want to be that person to help be that representative and make sure people's voices and concerns and whatever they put are addressed.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Caesars Lepeta, and I've been a resident of Richmond for a very long time. I grew up here with Richard Hyde College, Helms Elementary. Purchased my home at Hilltop when I was twenty-two, became the HOA president there, I've been president there for thirteen years. Later on, I became the president of the Hilltop District Neighborhood Council. Then we created the Hilltop District Homeowners and Stakeholders Association to oversee the million-dollar budget that Hilltop has assessed or that we get assessed. Through that, I've been more and more involved with the city, more and more involved with the community, trying to build the community, trying to bring people together, trying to hold our city accountable to what they tell us they're going to do, accountable to the money that would have been taxed, making sure it's being used properly, making sure we get the services as well. Thank you.
Are we going to have any indications of time at all, or we just?
Do you feel like, yeah, okay?
Yeah, if you give at the one-minute mark, I think, yeah, that'd be sweet. Thank you all so much for coming here tonight. My name is Ben Choi, and I'm also running for City Council. I've been on the planning commission for the last six years. So, and I've lived now in Richmond for almost ten years. A little more about myself. I'm an immigrant. I came to my parents' province, this country, when I was just seven years old. And actually, I'll tell a little story. When I was about eleven years old, I was on the phone taking care of some business for my father because he didn't speak English very well. And when I got off the phone, my dad had this look of pride on his face, and he said, "Wow, the person on the other end of that phone thinks you're an American." And he was very proud of me, and, you know, he was right, I am an American. But despite the fact that he was proud and he could see that I wouldn't have the barriers that language caused in his life, not knowing English, I felt a little bit, you know, it was troubling to me because I felt that that separated me from my father. And I realized at that moment that I must take the opportunities that had been afforded to me in America by my parents bringing me here, but at the same time, I must remember where I come from and who I am deep down inside. I feel like Richmond is in a similar situation now. It looks like there will be plenty of opportunities coming up in the, for economic development, for jobs, for development in general of homes. But we have to remember who we are inside, and we have to make sure that we preserve the folks that make Richmond great and keep them right here in Richmond. Thank you.
Good to see you again. I was here in Vinay, I think, last month, so soon to come back here and say hello again. So let me quickly tell you, for the past three years, I've served on the Workforce Investment Board. Two years ago, I'm from Mayor, it wasn't very successful. But I've served on that board for over three years. I was initially appointed by Gail McLaughlin, and then we were appointed by the Prime Mayor. Through that board, we've been able to create over five thousand jobs in this city. What we have here as a job came out of that board. We've been able to bring Amazon here. If you look at what's going on in Richmond, we are the most active weed in the area. So we're creating the job. What I intend to do in the next four years, if I'm lucky enough to receive your vote, is to work on creating a downtown that we all can be proud of. Richmond downtown doesn't exist. We're going to rebuild our downtown and make it where it should be. Then we're looking at the port. We need to have a port that we need to be proud of. Our ports need expansion. We need to expand the business operation in that port so we can create jobs for everyone, not just for few people. That's what I intend to do. And then in the Hilltop, I'm happy to see that Hilltop is being sold. I brought it up, including the season, we brought the attention to Hilltop two years ago, and now Hilltop is sold. We want to make sure we build a Hilltop that can be vibrant. Once again, thank you very much, look forward to talking more with you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and my name is Corky Fousey. I want to start off by thanking you so very much. El Sabranti is one of my big, big turnouts when I run for City Council. If you remember, two years ago, I was here and I was complaining about the budget of the city of Richmond. Now everybody's complaining about the budget. I was able to see it ahead of time, and I am running for reelection because you don't have a voice at that council. I am your voice at the council. I just, when I was Vice Mayor, I had gone to China, and I brought back a three-hundred-million-dollar project to the city of Richmond to help fix our budget, and also five years of union jobs for people in Richmond. My three items are, is the budget, crime, and jobs. It's a shame that a ninety-four-year-old woman gets beat up in her house. You can be nice and be friends with City Hall, but the thing is, they still have to do their job. And sometimes I step out ahead of everybody else and do my job, but I appreciate you, and I appreciate El Sabranti, and I appreciate Richmond, and I hope that you'll send me back to the Richmond City Council. Thank you.
Hi, thank you so much for coming out in this rainy night here. My name is Jim Rogers. I'd like to talk a little bit about some of the issues that I've worked on with El Sabranti, because when I started running for office a number of years ago, when I go to El Sabranti, what I heard constantly was, "Well, we're kind of out here, everybody's forgotten about us." I haven't. When I was elected county supervisor quite a few years ago, I had a policy of not permitting bad developments. There was not even a single development brought to the Board of Supervisors during the four years I was on the board. I started up the Sheriff's Substation in El Sabranti, and the first thing I did actually as county supervisor is I created the El Sabranti MAC, the Municipal Advisory Council. Now, that's in the county area, but of course, you know, as you know, county and city boundaries crisscross quite a bit. I'm proud that people like Rosemary Corten and Tom Butt endorsed me. We've been fighting for years, going back to when we would oppose the bad developments in El Sabranti, and both Rosemary and Tom are endorsing me, which I'm very proud of. I've worked closely with Eleanor Boyne, who is a good friend, on those same issues for many, many years. Your elementary school, Alenda, was threatened with closure a few years ago, and I can see a lot of you remember that. So I led the fight on that, and I not only was able to work with my council members to save that school from closing, but on top of that, I brought a proposal to the council that we would give the school district operational money, they would give us money out of their bond budget for repairs that we had to do anyway to the swimming center roof at Kennet. So what happened is that we not only got to save the school, and Alenda, as you know, has now won numerous awards from the state of California. So we not only got to save the school, but using my experience as a successful small businessman, I figured out how we could do that at no net cost to the city. So thank you very much for your time, and I look forward to you answering the questions later.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Matt Page. I think most of you know me. I was a neighbor for about twenty years up on Deep Strain Development. Every development here, if you live in Richmond, whether it's Peterson Merredi, the Valley, whether it's Perrin Development, Deep Strain, or if you come from Carriage Hill area, I had a part in that. We had a lot of opposition at the time. Every development that we tried to build in Richmond, we've always had opposition. But those of you that live in these nice homes, I was not the necessary person that made it happen, but I was a leader in making it happen. My three areas are economic development. We've got to create more opportunities for business to come into the city. Businesses provide not only revenue to the city, but employment opportunities. We've got to do something with the budget. We cannot spend money that we don't have, and we need people on that council that at least know how to count. Third is public safety. When you call police or you call the fire, you want service immediately. We've got to maintain a high level of public safety. No community can survive, and no business is going to come into the city of Richmond if you don't have that number-one priority, public service and public safety. So those are areas that I'm concerned with. I've enjoyed being in this community. My son still, I didn't sell it, I didn't rent it. My son still lives there on Silver Bell Avenue, and I'm proud to be a part of it. I've been a part of the El Sabranti Valley, and so I thank you, and I appreciate your support. Twenty-five years, thirty-five years as a councilman, twice your mayor. Thank you very much.
Also, I appreciate that you would just say thirty seconds, shorter than they are. So thank you all for being here, and it's nice being here again. I was here last month, as Uche mentioned. First, a few quick things about me, so you know where my heart is. You know, I volunteer with Writer Coach Connection. We help, we work with students one-on-one on their writing assignments. I was a mentor with Rescued and Art Bell, and also I was a math tutor with Literacy by the Adult Program. I was also a volunteer with Richmond Trees. We planted five hundred trees in the city. So what have I done in the two years on council? Well, for the first time in many years, this year, we actually had a structurally balanced budget. And that was really important, because in 2013, we had a deficit of more than nine million dollars. In 2014, we borrowed nine million dollars. And that is why we had done downgrade the junk bond status last year. And that is really critical, because I know folks in the Valley sometimes feel that they don't get their adequate share of services. Code enforcement staff, for example, has been cut in half. And that is happening because people weren't paying attention to the city's finances. They were taking on debt without understanding exactly what the debt was.
Three seconds.
So I, so what you get with me is someone that studies the issues really carefully and makes a thoughtful, independent call. I am an attorney with law degree from Berkeley. I've worked as a software engineer, so I'm good with math. The issues I want to work on are the same issues that are important for everybody in this city. Education, jobs, and crime. Those are the three critical issues. Those are the issues I'm, I forgot on, that I go through, explain to you questions. Okay.
Thank you candidates. Let's start here. Two to three minutes. So in 2014, voters approved Measure U based on the promise that the money would be primarily spent on youth services and on street repairs. As a matter of fact, every voting member, or every member of the city council that was elected, many of whom are sitting in this room right now, sat in this room two years ago and committed to spend Measure U money on those two things. To what degree do you feel that the Richmond Mayor and City Council have kept those commitments?
This is horrible. You guys are crazy. It seems like what's happened is that a lot of the money for Measure U has made its way to the general fund, and I think part of that might be due to the crisis of the last budget over the years. So from what I've been told, that's basically what happened. And obviously, that's not exactly the height of transparency. That's not how they should do policy. So I have to admit, as a voter, as someone who, I believe, if I remember correctly, I voted for Measure U, that is a true disappointment. I could understand if they were to have a public, a public meeting to direct the funds and perhaps have some amount of public input if it was an emergency-like situation. That's completely understandable, but I am concerned that there was, I can understand how the public, and me as a member of the public, think that might not have been, that might have been a bit of sleight of hand in city management. So I'm definitely, I'm definitely in favor of greater accountability, greater, basically, there's a reason we have public meetings, and we should use that for, for this type of emergency, that version of that city, what happened. Another thing I'd like to just point out is, I've always been concerned that, I mean, obviously, potholes are a problem in Richmond, but I've always been concerned about why, I mean, everyone knows that the reason potholes form is, is that some of the vehicles on our roads are actually beyond the design for the roads. So I've always wondered why there isn't a little more scrutiny on that? Why, you know, why do our state truckers ride on our roads, whereas we have to do bond measures to fix our roads? So that's just a little bit of food for blood for the future. We should certainly look into some of the industries and maybe use those roads a little bit harder than the rest of us. We don't have a Google lesson, but if there was, I'd definitely have my hand down. Thanks.
So we were sold one thing, and we bought another. From the beginning, for some reason, I was in the same room at the same time that Bill Lindsay was out there promoting Measure U. So I was able to hear all the questions and all the answers and figure out that it was not going to go to our potholes, it was going to go to the hole in the budget. When Gail McLaughlin came to the never council meeting at Hilltop, she started out by giving us good news. We got five million dollars from Caltrans to redo the pavement on Hilltop Drive. And then she said, "We're going to need Measure U to cover the potholes." My first question was, "What about the five million we just got? How many potholes do we have on Hilltop Drive?" No answer. When I was going out there with Bill Lindsay, I wasn't going after them, I just happened to be in the same room, two in the same room at the same time, so people were asking, "Is the money going to go to the general fund?" And he said, "There's a possibility, because the type of tax that we're going to have allows it to go in there, we can use it for whatever we want." And people kept pressing and saying, "Is it only going to be for our infrastructure, our roads, our lights, our parks, what we are being sold?" And going around and around and around, you have to really be at all three meetings to understand the answer. Most people only got to one. We have to be able to hold people accountable. That is why I became involved with district elections. And that will be up later, so that's just proof. But if we have no accountability, we can pass as many taxes as we want, and we will never see that that we're paying for. At Hilltop, because we oversee the million-dollar budget, three months ago, we had three hundred thousand dollars in reserves. A few weeks ago, I asked them, "We need to use it." We have forty thousand dollars in reserves. And we, the district, have not spent it. Accountability where? Accountability what? We still have potholes. We have a whole road without lights. Had a conversation with someone yesterday. The employee said, "We can't fix it because we have no money to fix the lights." Said, "What can we do to fix them? It is dark early, it is raining, it's a hazard."
If somebody had voted for Measure U or was promoting it for what, you know, we were all going to be told it was going to be going to, I was disappointed too, because I've talked to different community organizations and a bunch of other people who wanted to see that money actually go to what it was intended to go to to begin with, and next thing you know, that didn't really seem to happen. So a lot of people actually felt betrayed, felt like they just voted for something that wasn't really there. I mean, we were in a deficit, we were in a budget deficit, so the only bright side of Measure U was the fact that it helped us out a little bit with the deficit, but at the same time, people were looking forward to doing certain things with that tax revenue that was being built up with the roads and with the community programs, and that's the only reason I thought was that people voted for it, because I was hoping that it was going to go to those exact same things, and that when you don't have things, when you have a tax measure that was advertised as this and is not going to that, going to what it was supposed to be intended for, you lose trust within the community, you lose trust within the constituents, and when it does come time for us to all come together to bring our money together to actually do something with the intended point that this is what's going to go to, people already feel so taxed that they just don't want nothing to do with it. If we're going to be, if we're going to be passing tax measures and give bullet points that these are what the things that's going to go to, we need to hold ourselves up to that same kind of technique and make sure that that's exactly what the funds are going to. So that's where my disappointment came in on that issue.
So on Measure U, and I really appreciate this question, and I want to make sure folks understand exactly what happened, because there's no way anybody could look at it and not say that what was promised didn't happen. It's just a fact, what was promised did not happen. And here's exactly what happened. Measure U was always going to go to the general fund, that's not the issue, that's the way the tax is written, and the language always said that it was going to, quote unquote, "maintain services," so technically, from that sense, it's doing that. The piece that we had all promised, and every single one of us said that we were going to do, is our finance director at the time, Bill Lindsay, come up with a plan that was going to allow us to bond the money for Measure U out, and then do a massive street paving program across the city of Richmond. That's what we were supposed to do. There was a vote on that specific thing. It was January twenty-seventh, two thousand fifteen. I encouraged every person in here to go on the city's website, watch the video. The vote happened, it was a three-three vote. Councilmember Penny Pla had not been appointed yet, and the RPA members of the council literally blocked it. That's exactly what happened. And so it's important for folks to know that. So by the time the budget came around, it was kind of a done deal. So because that bond didn't happen, and just so folks understand it, had that bond happened, we would have been forced to spend that money on street paving, and that's why that was sort of the idea to do that. Because that bond didn't happen, a few months later, we got the bond downgrade that Mr. Penny Pla mentioned earlier. So it was no longer, staff could no longer recommend that we bond out the Measure U money, because it would have been at a much higher interest rate. So by that point, it was a done deal, we couldn't do the bonding, and we had a tight, of course, budget situation. So at that point, it was done. Measure U money was not going to go towards any increase in roads, it was just going to go to maintain the status quo. The decision that was made was January twenty-seventh, two thousand fifteen, and at that meeting, I can tell you, I felt blindsided. I think everybody who wasn't a member of RPA felt blindsided, because one after another, RPA members came up to the, to the diets and, you know, in terms of from the public, and the RPA council members all said that they no longer supported bonding out the money, even though all of us had supported it a year earlier. That's exactly what happened, and you can make your judgment of what you think about that.
I'm going to tell them, if you have one minute.
Yes, so I will just explain what happened in two thousand fourteen, that a bond was put on. So for the two thousand fourteen budget, three things happened that you need to know. First thing is, the city borrowed money, technically a refund, I think, they called it a swap ship, but it's basically borrowing money. So they borrowed nine million dollars, out of which they used six million dollars to plug the hole in the two thousand fourteen budget. Second thing, they suppressed the five-year financial forecast, because it forecasted bad news for the budget. The third thing, it did not happen, but people were certainly aware of, or should have been aware of, is that the money from the Chevron tax settlement in two thousand fourteen, it was thirteen million dollars. From two thousand fifteen, it was going to drop to seven million dollars, to six million dollars shortfall. Okay? So now, when you borrow six million dollars and your revenue is going to go down by six million dollars, that is going to be a twelve-million-dollar gap in your next budget. I just think it's really disingenuous of them to have claimed that they would be putting the eight million dollars on the sales tax towards anything other than plugging that gap. Simply were not prepared to make the twelve million dollars in cards to other parts of the budget. In terms of what are In terms of what has happened, yes, street spending has gone up. But it has gone up by half a million dollars compared to the eight million dollars that Measure U brought in. And so, uh, was, was the money used well? Well, you know, unfortunately, what happened was, uh, even in two thousand fifteen, I voted against the, against that particular budget, that budget also, you know, used three and a half million dollars in borrowed money, which is why you got hit with the second downgrade that lost us more than ten million dollars. The overtime person we had made in this year, they could have made them in two thousand fifteen, they could have been done in two thousand fourteen, they would have been far better off. But, you know, people kept the can down the road, they did not disclose the city's real issues, and they basically, uh, couldn't accomplish it. I, I, I have always tried to be as honest as I can about, uh, the city's finances. I try to make as many people aware as possible about it. I've gone to neighborhood councils and talked about it, I've talked with, uh, you know, people who live here, and in turn, they put pressure on the politicians, and we'll make things work.
Let me, uh, first apologize, uh, on my behalf, because when I voted to place one ballot, I voted under the same impression what most of you had, that the overwhelming amount of the money was gonna go for street repairs. And then we had a problem placing one ballot, because if you designate a specific expenditure, you gotta get two-thirds vote. So we threw in the recreation, the library, and the public safety, only to get the fifty plus one percent vote, fifty plus one. And that's how it eventually got passed. I wanna follow up on, uh, J L. But what happened is that it was a six-person council. We started discussing the bond measure, which all of us felt if we went far with the bond measure, we could accomplish the project. RPA, which is dominated by S I U ten twenty-one, the other one has got this rent control on the ballot as well, they wanted to go out and hire employees to do the repair of the roads. The staff says, no, you don't hire full-time employees for a twelve-month period when you're only gonna be using them maybe six, eight months because of the weather. You contract employees out, and when then, when the weather's bad, you don't pay. S I U and the three RPA insisted that we hire additional staff. And you can imagine what would have happened when the implement weather came about, there would be no work, they sit around getting a paycheck. And that's where the stalemate came from, the RPA and ten twenty-one. Again, I apologize, and I'm not voting against that transfer of tax. I'm at the point where I just don't trust the leadership of City Hall to do and follow through what they promised the people. That transfer of tax is another gimmick to just fatten up the, the checks. Lastly, we, at least I have asked for a forensic audit of every staff member, every department in that city. We have no idea what anyone does until you can prove to me that we need the number of staff members that we have, or maybe we need to increase, I don't know. We need a forensic audit to tell us what each and every staff member is doing. And as long as I've been on the council thirty-five years, we haven't, we've done it only one time, and that was when Ken Smith was the city manager, that time, some time ago.
I think that when we talk about this, the analogy comes to my mind is that you take out a big loan because you'd like to get a new kitchen because your old one really sucks. Now, by the time that you're about to get moving with it, you find out that your foundation is really shot, and your house is in real danger of falling down the hill. Now, as the person who led the campaign for Measure U, ran the campaign, raised the money, sent out the members, I'm biased, I admit it, I was in favor of it then, I'm in favor of it now. And I wanna go back when people say, oh, it's like somehow wasted, the money somehow kinda disappeared, okay? It didn't disappear. We would have liked to have had the kitchen, we'd like to have had the bond, and I would have voted with J L, um, and with that and Tom, but I would have voted for that, would have liked to have had that, it didn't happen. But think about it, think about what the council, I wasn't on the council at that time, think what the council had to do to balance the budget. Now, think about missing out another six or seven million or so per year into the ongoing future. Think about the cuts that they would have made. So when people get up here and say, oh, Measure U, uh, was a mistake, you gotta ask them a really simple question. What would you have cut out of the budget? The police, the fire, the library, the people to get the streetlights working we talked about earlier, the light, people who go out and look for abandoned houses? Like, what would you cut? Okay? And you gotta ask them that. And the answer is that people don't wanna talk about that because we're talking about real services that affect real people. Now, I was not one of the ones who was in favor of this being a hundred percent spent on potholes, even though I'm very much in favor of that, and I, uh, a few years before brought in, uh, several million dollars, uh, in terms of redevelopment to fix potholes. So I'm, I'm all for the pothole issue. But I was not in favor a hundred percent, both because I didn't think it was the right policy and because it would probably make it illegal. I was in favor of a balanced approach with an emphasis on that. And we talked about the promises, the campaign, which I ran, the city ballot, uh, the impartial ballot analysis, and the city mailings, what they all had in common, what they all had in common, was that street repair was one issue amongst three or four other issues. Okay? So whatever people talk about individually, that's all fine and good. But the thing that most voters saw when they're dealing with this, which is the ballot statement, the informational mailings that the city did, and the campaign mailings, again, they had street repair as one issue among three or four. And the reality is that the items that were mentioned, the other items like police, like fire, like libraries, that were mentioned in the campaign along with the street repair, that money was in fact spent out of those services.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen, that's the reason you have to send me back to city council in this very room. I'm sorry I left, and I was trying to go to my car and get the brochure that I put out. I spent eighteen thousand dollars asking you not to vote for Measure U in this very room. And how you allowed them to sell you a tax that is forever, I mean, your grandkids are gonna be paying that tax, it is forever, no sunset clause. You know, I sit here and I listen to Mr. Rogers, and you know, I guess people say I'm aggressive on the council, but when you take advantage of my people in the city of Richmond, that irritates the heck out of me, and I have to stand up. Mr. Rogers, for the last eight elections he's ever ran, he sends you a cartoon, potholes, I'm fixing the potholes. Then he sits here and tells you, well, uh, uh, we didn't get, we added other things, and he knew it was going to the general fund. He knew that. Mr. Pen Play was telling you the truth when he said, we borrowed nine million dollars. Guess what? I refused to vote for the nine million dollars. That's why they say I was disruptive at the council, because I was trying to bring you what was happening in the back room of City Hall. There is no excuse. The West County Times interviewed all of us, and, uh, Mr. Bernstein said, you lied to the people of the city of Richmond when you told them that Measure U was going, not going to go to the budget. You hear J L down there saying about who voted for what or, or whatever went down, but you know what, ladies and gentlemen? We borrowed that nine million dollars. And I, I don't remember, uh, uh, Mr. Pen Play, what is the interest we paid on the nine million we borrowed?
Well, um...
Just a number.
Well, at the time, it wasn't much, but what happened is because of the downgrade, uh, it, the nine million borrowed in twenty fourteen came due as sixteen million dollars.
There we go, sixteen million on nine, because we are down, we got downgraded because we didn't do our job. Here are all these people selling you bill of goods, you need somebody there that's gonna watch out for your back. And I'm telling you something, when they sit here and they tell you, oh, well, we had to borrow this or had to borrow that, they didn't have to borrow. And as you heard Rogers talking about, well, who did you wanna lay off? No, the question is stop spending. That's what you do. It's just like when your kid says, I need a new pair of shoes, and you say, well, son, we just don't have the money this month, maybe next month we can do it. But you don't borrow nine million and pay back sixteen in interest because your credit is horrible. I mean, ladies and gentlemen, you might, I'm a little aggressive and I say it the way it is, but you gotta really look at what I did. I wouldn't vote for that, only councilperson would vote, would not vote for the plan. And also, I made the council accountable. And the way in the, in the ballot, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
If you, in twenty fourteen, I, I remember clearly telling folks, we need to have a comprehensive audit. It was my flyer. If you look at my flyer this year, my first flyer before the coin draw, if you look at it, it says transparency. Again, I'm focused on our biggest issue here, which is lack of transparency and our elected officials not doing what they promised they would do. If I, many of us say, we need folks that can catch, that's not all we need. We also need people who have some business common sense. That's what we are lacking there. When we debated this issue two years ago, many of us asked for sunset, who were given the reason, we don't want a sunset because it will affect our ability to pass this measure. We said, okay. But we also asked for some assurance that what we, what we said we would do with this money, that we will do it, then it wasn't given to us. So after the election, our credit was downgraded. If you can go back and look at the statements made by the two times that we were downgraded, it says, we do not have a plan to deal with our future issues. One of those issues is spending. And we don't have a plan to deal with revenue stream coming in. And many of those things are lack of leadership. Again, we have a chance in twelve days to either change the future of Richmond or push us into bankruptcy. It's your choice. It's your choice, you have three choices to make. Twelve days from now, three of us here, you send us in there, but you have to look at our background and ask yourself, who has the capacity here to actually address the issue we have here? It's not just electing three people, they elect people that have the capacity to say, no, we cannot spend money we don't have. People that have the capacity to go out there and actually talk to businesses and bring them into our community. I spoke to Janet Johnson several times, she tells me, no one in that council helps her. Matt does some good job, I have to give him credit, despite the fact that he, he's the elder of the, of, he's, he's the oldest person there, no disrespect, but he's the only one that I can say is actually more proactive in terms of working with us in the workforce investment, part to bring businesses here. So I have to give him that credit. But what we need here is folks that will go out there and actually talk to businesses. Businesses just not show up. That's what we are struggling with here, we have to have a, a mixed revenue stream. Then we can actually say, okay, let's spend this money here, but we are clearly lied to by the elected officials, and we must reject them this time. Thank you.
Thank you, candidates. Just to be clear, uh, we knew going in that the money was going to go into the general fund, it had to, uh, as some candidate said, in order to pass with a simple majority. It, for the same reason, could not have a sunset clause. And we rely on the word of the leadership at the time in order to overlook those things. So it's gonna be up to us to make a determination on whether or not we feel its promises were proper. Next question. What do you think is the most appropriate use for Point Mulattie? What would your plan be and how would you implement that plan?
Three minutes. Point Mulattie is, uh, one of several areas where we have enormous potential to really hit a home run. And I don't subscribe to the idea that Point Mulattie should be built all the way over with economic development calling everywhere. I also don't subscribe to the idea that there should be no economic development, partly because it's illegal, we, we got the land, and there's a clear obligation to economic development. But more importantly, because it's a matter of not only having the economic development, having the jobs, having the tax base, uh, having a plan to prioritize our residents and our jobs, but it's also a question of being able to turn that two-mile stretch into a wonderful recreational alternative. And if you think about it, with a major source of funding from a compact development, again, I'm not talking about it all the way along, uh, the shoreline there, but in a, but development in one relatively compact area, you can generate quite a bit of money, and I feel a lot of that money should go into other types of recreational things. You can imagine a kayak center, you can imagine bicycles, you can imagine, uh, trips for inner-city kids to go out and those types of activities, there, there's just all kinds of stuff. And so, I think that, again, we need a balance when we're approaching the issue of development out there. Now, having said that, as is the case with the UC Global Campus, it's a lot easier to imagine a development than it is to actually get one. And it's really, really important, really important, that we remember, when people come up with cool plans, and there's lots of cool plans out there, it's very important to remember that the most important test that they have to pass is the test of economic viability. So when you hear people talking about cool green hotel centers, whatever, whatever, that's wonderful, we'd all love to see that, but you have to ask the question, is the market there in order to accomplish that?
Well, most of you should know that I was from the color of a casino. I think that was one of the most beautiful projects that could have developed out there in that, uh, Point Mulattie. It didn't materialize. But we received that property from, uh, the commerce, run dollars, bills, specifically states, that that, uh, facility must be for economic development, which means revenue to the city and employment opportunities. I'm not opposed to recreational use. We got Point Mulattie, they don't pay no taxes, they take up a lot of space. This development at Point Mulattie has to be coordinated, that includes recreation, but more important, economic development for jobs for our people and revenue for our city. For example, Richmond is becoming the hub for recreational all over the Bay Area. People come into Richmond, they use our facility, John Knox and Mill Park, they stop not to buy one dime worth of coffee or whatever, they in and out. That didn't happen to us at all. We got, uh, highest unemployment among our youth in this community, in this Bay Area problem. We need jobs, and we need facilities that are gonna facilitate economic development and coupled with recreation. I got no problem, the shoreline itself should be open space for recreation, can't be very much else there. So I support a combined facility that is gonna enhance the city of Richmond, that's gonna provide recreational, economic development, jobs, and revenue.
Yes, so, um, uh, I look upon, uh, one thing first off, and that is, there is no proposal that does not set aside at least half of the area of Point Mulattie for open space. So no one's actually talking about developing the whole of Point Mulattie. Uh, and the, the, the key thing to understand with the Point Mulattie economic development is that there is no infrastructure there at this point. And so, getting the infrastructure out there is going to be very expensive. And that means that to make that infrastructure cost pencil out... And that means that to make that infrastructure cost pencil out, you have to bear a certain number of housing units. Housing unit is where the money is. It's not in commercial development. Okay? So if you say, well, I want four hundred housing units, well, guess what? That is never going to be valid. It won't pay for the infrastructure costs. So what we have to find out first and foremost is exactly what the infrastructure costs are, rather than just allow some developer to give us their estimate of infrastructure cost and then different developers coming in with very different proposals. I think what we need to find out, what we need to do first is figure out what the infrastructure costs are, what kind of building envelope is viable, and then come up with the kind of project that we want and get the requests for proposals, the RFPs accordingly. So that, I think, is the way to go. First, we find out what our options are, then we need the choices for those options. And this will take a few years. It's not going to happen in the next few months. Bye, everyone.
So, yeah, I think first, we need to understand that it doesn't necessarily matter what we as individual council members want to do at Point Malati. That's not how it's going to be decided. The process that's going to happen is number one, we're going to, the council's already voted to do this. We're going to have a public process, a visioning process, where we're going to get input from the public about what they want to say about Point Malati, what the public's vision is for that area. Then we're going to go out with basically an RFP and we're going to ask the, see what developers have an interest in doing Point Malati and seeing how closely that interest lines up with what the public wants. And we're going to have a series of choices, hopefully a series of choices, based off of that, assuming we're able to get rid of that lawsuit. So there's, that's going to be the process, and that's sort of going to be how we decide what happens there. That said, I think it is extremely important that we do a couple of things at Point Malati. Number one, we do need to be environmentally careful there. I am endorsed by the Sierra Club, and I do come from the environmental movement. I used to work in the League of Conservation Motors. And so it's going to be extremely important that we do something that's appropriate environmentally. But we do have to maximize economic potential as well. As someone else mentioned, that is in the law that allows us to have Point Malati. Specifically suggests that we need to do that. But also, it's not an opportunity that people could afford to lose. So I think, and as other folks have mentioned, there's a whole bunch of infrastructure costs that need to be created. So that's going to be the process. We're going to go through this visioning process. We're going to see what the public wants. We're going to put out requests for proposals, see what developers are willing to offer. And then we're going to be in a position, hopefully, assuming the lawsuits get disposed of by then, to make a decision.
Yeah, after visiting Point Malati, just in terms of the location, where it's at, I just automatically just sat there and just looked at it as like definitely a regional park area, but a regional recreation area where you can even probably build a campsite for people just to come just in terms of recreation. And I do know that there are different ways of doing that to where it does make it economically feasible. We don't need to do a major development just to make Point Malati economically feasible. We can come up with recreational activities. We can develop it into a campsite, develop staff housing, if anything, like minimal small housing developments, if anything, to kind of support the atmosphere around there. But when it comes to just thinking about Point Malati and what seems appropriate for it, nothing else like really clicked to me besides saying that this should actually be a regional park. This should be a place where people come to just to kind of get away from everything, where people can come and visit and see another side of Richmond. And that's just where, that's just where my mind is at. Is how do we navigate how to keep it a regional park and even develop it into an area that can be a campground and come up with recreational activities for our youth? So that's just kind of the vision I had when I first met there.
We always have to keep the public's options and mindset first. So making sure that first, we put it out to the public, get feedback from the public. I live in that area. I live at Hilltop. So while that affects Hilltop just a little bit, I want to make sure that I listen more to the people that surround it because they're the ones that can be more affected by the traffic that's going to be caused by it. Keeping in mind that it is for economic development. So that is, we have to develop something. But just because we have to develop something doesn't mean that we're going to just build something that's going to kill everything around it. It's about balance. You can achieve balance. You can achieve a great balance in that area there. Now, if you take it back many, many years, way before I was born, because I also took a tour of the area, it looked very different. There was no Uplifts streets. They were all just fairly new. So there's a lot of new stuff there that wasn't there before. There's a lot of cemented areas already as well. You could probably build them back without having to ruin a lot of the landscape and everything down. So in regards to balance, again, it is possible to be able to have a park that brings in economic development to the businesses around. At Hilltop, we were able to finish a park. Took seventeen years to finish, but we finished it. And when that park was finished, the businesses around reported an increase in revenue. Now, people say parks don't bring revenue. In this instance, it did because we were cautious with what power we did and what we were doing. And that increased the people coming into that area. Point Malati is looking different. There's nothing there now. So anything we put out there is going to disturb what's there now. So it's balance. I'm also endorsed by the Sierra Club, so making sure that we keep the environment, but also the goal, the task that we've been given, like economic development.
Now, Point Malati is a study area. It's a very unusual place because it already has an overlay on it as a study area. It's basically being worked off in the community. As J L did a very good job of explaining. So we're already in the process. There's a Point Malati Commission. They're very hardworking people that are looking at all the possibilities. Now, to my mind, it's something that needs to be worked out in a step-by-step way. I think the problem here is we don't want to set, we don't want to look for some silver bullet solution, build the whole thing over with a bunch of housing developers, that kind of stuff. There are terrible environmental threats that are, that would be brought about by just building huge amounts of housing there. There's actually three separate channels of runoff that would be disturbed by non-porous structures being in there. If you think of a hillside, the water pouring down, it's porous. So by the time it gets to the bottom of the hill, you've got a silky hill, but the water doesn't run off in sheets. If you put buildings there, it's all hard, impermeable surfaces. Water forms rivers and goes quickly. That's something to worry about. Erosion is a real issue on the shoreline. So we have to be very smart about it. I think there is some room for some kinds of economic development. And we, I think, that's going to be very important for bringing along the research we're talking about. But we should keep, I think we should keep in mind that it's a...